Seven P M. Dunbarren Board of Selectmen meeting to order. All three selectmen are present. They're welcome Justin to the board as a new selectman. Mike didn't want that package?
Yeah.
I've got some old business from, oh, also the town administrators, President Lee Tomo. And Leo Martel is videotaping for the public. It'll be mounted, uh, it'll be uploaded to YouTube and the town website. And Don Lawson, our chairman of the Cemetery Committee is here. Okay, old business from last week.
I'll make a motion to approve the seven P M minutes of March tenth as amended.
Good. I will second Mike's motion. And, uh, I would say Robert Martel's not here, so he probably abstained on that.
Yep, I abstained.
Okay.
I'd just like to make sure we pass kudos onto the recorder who's doing translating. And, uh, good job as usual.
Okay, seven, I'm gonna open up to, uh,
Can we make a vote on it?
Oh, yeah. That's what we kinda did, but.
It's the hat.
That's the hat. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's why you said abstain again. Okay, I'll open up for a public comment.
Uh, yep, Lee Martel, listen, I came here this afternoon, I had business here in town at the office yesterday. I got here about one thirty-ish, maybe a little later. I got the last parking spot. They were all at the restaurant.
Oh.
Now, if you're, you know, at the meeting we had, the town meeting, someone talked about parking problems. And you're gonna be discussing that while it's closed. Are we supposed to all park in their parking lot whenever we need to?
Did, um, how was their parking?
There was not one car in their parking lot.
Okay.
And they were there all day today, there were cars in and out all day.
Yeah, I know, and I, I was out there and six people came out of there, got in individual cars and six cars left.
Okay, now what's the name of that restaurant?
This morning, there were three there next to me.
But it was loaded, it was not, there was one spot, I got the last one.
Yeah, I think they park here because they ease the parking, because it's a lot more open as opposed to getting in that lot to turn around, but still.
Right, but what's gonna happen when, number one, you need, you're gonna talk tonight about where you're gonna park, well, it's closed. Well, you know, like I said, when we're having functions up in the second floor, can we all just park in their parking lot?
They do a parking in the rear too.
They do, but there was no vehicles in there.
Yeah, absolutely.
I made a point to walk around and look, there was not one vehicle in any other parking lot.
Well, that's a good point.
And the thing is, I like to ask the question that in case, in case there is no parking spaces, will there, will there space be available for town business parking spaces?
May as well use them.
You know what could be a temporary fix too is to put a sign there to say that,
Town business during Monday through Friday. Through Monday through Friday.
Yeah.
It's a four or five or something.
I think if we send them a letter so they can make their patron to wherever, put a sign up in their own thing, because they do a parking, as Leo said, just people easier parking here.
But, but, yeah, but Dave, by the time they get over there, they won't read the sign, they'll just walk in.
Yeah, yeah.
No, but I'm saying when they're in there too, they can, people ordering, okay, here's a sign.
Yeah, get out of there.
The people can, uh,
Yeah.
You know, pass the word along after the word's been passed, I think it will start to work too.
Because, you know, the weather is turning well and people are gonna go there because they have outdoor tables, seating.
No, I'm in agreement with you, you know, if one person or something overflow park, but if they're not using their lot at all.
Well, part of the problem is, is it's dirt and mud.
Right.
Oh.
This one's paved.
Yeah.
Uh, because I know a lot of the ladies don't like to walk in the mud, you know. So, I think that's a reason they park elsewhere, but.
Well, let's start with this letter and see how that goes, and if it doesn't work, we'll go to the signage and that type of stuff.
Yeah, bring it to their attention.
If it, if, if this happens, you know, people are gonna start complaining that, you know, because they think that they should be able to park to use the building, yet they can't park here, you know, where are we supposed to go?
Right.
Right?
Yep, well, that's a good point.
So now I gotta go park in the mud because they didn't want to.
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, okay.
You got one, Don?
Uh, just a quick update, uh, East Cemetery, we've got all the brush cleared and all the way. And including down in front, you know, where the fence kinda elves.
Yep.
And that did a great job, I walked it yes, or today, and, uh, So, it's all taken care of, two days of work and, uh, looks good.
And I heard you talking earlier, you got the wood cut up there as well.
Yeah, we did that, uh, on the fifth, and that, uh, four of us, uh, got it all cut and drug out of there and everything, two truckloads. And that, uh, you know, big tree.
No, I'm talking about, um, the wood behind the cemetery.
Talking about the trees we had.
Oh, yeah, yeah, those are all, that was done in January, but, uh, we got the, the wood cut.
From the huge tree.
It's on Roger Smith's property.
Oh.
Uh, we had two big, uh, el, or ash trees that were down there and it went across his ATV track for his grandkids. So, we had to remove that and, uh, on March fifth, Tom Cassano brought his, uh, excavator over. And Bob Lamarc, myself and Karen, while, we got that all cleaned up and that for him. Uh, we just have a little bit that we're gonna do when it warms up and get the rest of it out of there, but all, all the big stuff is gone.
Do you feel enough trees were taken behind the cemetery to protect the?
I walked it, uh, the other day and, uh, it, he, we took out a lot of trees. I'm gonna contact him and see if, uh, possibly we could get some of the wood for the woodbank or something like that.
We don't do the woodbank anymore.
Oh, we don't, okay.
Oh, is that?
Then heck with it then.
Yeah.
Yep, that was an ordeal that ended up costing us a lot of money shuffling wood around that never got,
Yeah.
brought to the proper families.
Okay.
Then they wanted delivery, it was just a process that was, uh,
Yeah.
It was more costly.
Not only they were afraid they wanted you to deliver it, huh?
Yeah, it was rotting and ended up giving it away.
Yeah.
So, all right, thanks for the update, Don. Okay, we have appointment paperwork for selectmen reps.
Town, town business first, East Coast Dunbarren.
Oh, yeah, I just checked Don off because you spoke. All right, Don, you're back on the agenda. Race Across Dunbarren.
Yes. As you may know, my tent for, uh, Race Across Dunbarren kinda took a beating, uh, at the town meeting.
We did, yeah, it was sad to see.
And, uh, it went south on me.
Was there two tents that got destroyed?
Two tents, yeah. But anyway, what I wanna do is I'm gonna have a fundraiser, raffle off the flag. I was gonna have a deal, uh, have a raffle for the flag then, but then the tent disappeared. So, I'm gonna do it, uh, coming up and we'll have the drawing on Patriots Day and I just wanted to get your permission to, you know, set up at the transfer station, but also to have it in the town office here so that, uh, we could sell tickets.
You're doing drawing on the eighteenth?
Yeah, eighteenth, Patriots Day.
And you're doing that drawing at the?
At, uh, to purchase the new tent.
Yeah, but are you, you're doing the drawing where?
Probably here at the town office on Monday morning or something.
Okay.
So, then we'll contact the people.
And what day did you wanna go to the transfer station?
Uh, Saturdays.
Yeah, Saturdays.
Where would you be set up at the transfer station? Where would you set up, like a little table?
Uh, right underneath the flag there, I have a small table. And then, so it'd be off to the side.
I don't have a big issue, did you talk with Woody about it all yet?
I will, and then, I don't think you'd have a problem with it, but.
I would say that if we can revert back to Woody, if he has no issue with it, I don't have an issue.
Okay.
I'm okay with it as long as Woody's okay with it as well.
I mean, I think that this is something small enough that you can catch people either on the way in or on their way out and not, not, uh, create traffic.
Yeah, and I'll be off to the side, so if they wanna stop after they go through, uh, the recycling part, you know, or come back or whatever.
Yeah, I think as long as you're not in the way of flow of traffic on Saturday, then.
I'll, I'll stay out of the flow of traffic, definitely.
And we haven't started that, uh, thing where people swap things anyway, so there shouldn't be a lot of traffic.
Swap shop.
Thank you, Don.
No, I think he's, uh, and, uh, thank you, Don, for putting the flag at the transfer station too.
Oh, sure, uh, that was my next question, you don't have a flag on this building, would you like to have one? I'll donate it.
It wouldn't be a bad idea, I don't think.
Is there one in the library?
Well, there's a big one.
Well, you got the flag pole.
Just the pole itself and that's.
Yeah, that's it there.
Where would we put it, one of the entry doors?
Yeah. Yeah, I'll bring it down, it's got a light on it and everything.
Let's think about that.
Yeah.
Think about that.
Yeah, I wouldn't mind having it up there.
Okay, uh, we'll put it by the front door then, or?
I'm not opposed to it, do you wanna, who do you think, Mike?
Uh, the flag, the flag can be staffed twenty-four by seven, it's got a light on it, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Same hours as the flags, well, that can go in year round then if it had.
Well, it's, it's a solar lamp, so.
No, I'm talking about the, the, the flag, that doesn't have to be taken down like on the roads.
Oh, no, done that take, okay.
That could be year round.
So, it's not a full-size flag that requires a light, is that what you just asked?
Yeah, well, that, and it's gonna be year round, it doesn't, it's, you know how we have restrictions on year-round use on telephone poles?
Yeah.
We can have that year round if we so desire it, so I have no issues with that.
I guess a question for me is what is the size of the flag that you were thinking?
Uh, three by five.
Oh, so it's not a big, big one?
Yeah, and it'd be up high enough so, you know, and it's on a supposedly untangible flag.
As long as it's high enough so it doesn't interrupt, you know, when it's starting to hit taxpayers as they come in.
Yep.
So, we're just gonna do one door?
Yes, I would only.
Indoor or outdoor, doesn't matter?
Doesn't matter, which door do you want it on?
I'm thinking, uh.
This one here is, uh, seems like the main entrance.
It is, it has been through COVID, so I think it's staying like that for a while, yeah.
Yeah, okay, I'll, I'll get that mounted up then for you.
Okay.
It'll be a donation from, you know, Race Across Dunbarren.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Let us know how you make out on your collection on that tent. As, uh, you're trying to do something there for Dunbarren and the tent gets totaled on it, you know?
You're gonna do it on Patriots Day too.
Oh, and, uh, for the vaccine clinics, we had three of them, we don't, vaccinated, uh, two hundred people.
Oh, two hundred?
Two hundred altogether.
Yep.
You know, the three days. So.
I'll check out Kim. Okay, thank you.
Have a good evening.
Thank you, Don.
Thank you, Don.
So, the appointment paper?
Yes, thanks.
I'm looking for. You got one last one, Mike?
It looks like this, Dave.
Haven't seen it yet.
And then I have last year's appointment excerpts of the minutes.
There you go.
And attached to it.
You let Mike shuffle these all around?
I didn't, they were in perfect order.
The key word was "were."
Mike has been known for that. All right, we're gonna go over the, uh, appointments of the selectmen represented to different boards and committees. And also, we've got a email out here later from the welfare director and recommended deputy. Okay. Board of Selectmen Chair, um, last year, Justin, you weren't here as a selectman, but, um, because I got the chair board, I told Mike next year, meaning this year, um, we would move him into the chair position if you don't have an issue with that. What we generally try and do is on a new selectman, we'll let him run as not being the chair for a couple of years and if they only gonna run for one period, obviously. But last year, we try and, you know, because they've been here and got a little experience, try and at least let him be chair. Some people don't wanna be chair, some selectmen just wanna come in and make their vote, uh, be heard, but don't wanna run, you know, town meetings and these meetings, so it's all depending on what the selectmen are comfortable doing. And, uh, Mike was chair prior to me and he asked her back, and how'd you make out with your appointment today?
He said, "Go for it."
There you go.
That's a quote unquote.
Okay, so I'm gonna write in Mike on that one. Um, co-chair?
I recommend you, David.
You make a vote on these as well, Justin.
Do I second or am I?
Yeah, just second Mike's motions, kind of on consensus.
Or you can do it all at the, at the.
Yeah, we just, why don't we just, we'll go down and then vote him while I stay.
Planning Board Rep, we've already signed Justin up for that last week, so that's coming on that one. Town Office's rep. That's one we haven't had in the past, but you guys are looking for a rep for town offices.
I think that it would be helpful, uh, in the event that I'm not available, that there's somebody that is a key, whether you have the same person, be the selectmen's rep for all of them, I mean,
Yep.
It's up to you, but we've always had a policeman, police department rep and a hot, a transfer station rep, well, there's never been anything that's brought up.
Yep.
I, I would say, I, I don't think it's been an issue, I think, uh, Lee would reach out, if I wasn't available, does she reach out to you the next day and then to, to Justin thereafter? So, I, I'd say just let it go blank and just say, any of the selectmen you can reach out to. Because remember, we can't make a decision as one, we can advise as, as one, you know, we can't even make a decision unless it's life and, like, uh, life, uh, urgency.
But in the case of the transfer station, for example?
Transfer station, I would recommend, and I'd recommend Dave there, because I was at last time, Dave, I'd recommend you for the transfer station.
Okay, so you're saying leave the town office blank, any one of you could be the go-to person.
Right.
The highway department the same.
Correct.
I think, I think the town office is, like, maybe goes in correlation with chairman and coach.
Right.
And then, myself, I think is the.
I concur.
M D J?
Yep.
M D J.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Highway Department?
I think it's, if there's an issue, Jeff usually comes before the board, and the thing is, we won't make a decision without his input regardless. And it's hard to make a decision without him being there, so I would say, say, leave it empty. And the thing is, if there's an issue, I, I've never been called by the transfer station agent, except that four o'clock, four o'clock in the morning one time, but that was a exception to the policy.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, I would say any.
Any, okay. Police Department Rep.
I, yeah. Transfer station, nothing to do.
Oh, he put me on there earlier when I was speaking.
Yeah.
And the reason for that, Justin, is sometimes I'll ask one of the selectmen to sit in on either an interviewing, um,
Job interviews and stuff like that.
New hire and that type of thing, that way everyone can make an action when we get people aboard.
Okay.
And the police department rep is, um, it's a point of contact where, let's say there's something going on in the town where, like, he can't come to the meeting or doesn't need to come to a meeting for like a snapshot of, he gives us peripheral awareness of what's going on, so he can reach out to one selectman, share the information, go from there. I've been in, I've been in for two years, I'm willing to give it up or I can continue, it's up to you, Dave, what do you think?
Want me to do that one for a little bit, Mike?
Okay, if you want, that'd be fine.
I'll try that one, because you are gonna have a lot more things going on now. Highway Safety Committee Rep.
They only meet on an as-needed basis, it's not a mandatory meeting, but it is something that if there's any type of, uh, federal, um, issues going on that they might ask that you call me.
I'll do that one as well.
You do, okay.
Because it kinda goes hand in hand with the police, and I know that even though it's not seeming like Justin's got a lot of these, he's got a planning board rep and he's gonna have Joint Loss and that.
Planning board is a monthly thing.
It's a monthly thing and they're, they've been having a lot of, um, specialty meetings bi-monthly to try and get some stuff done. And, uh, it looks like they're gonna continue that process, so it ends up being every two weeks and then with our meetings.
And on top of that, you get packets that you have to review and take time.
I would like to continue to be the alternate for, for certain reasons, there's certain current issues before the board now, so with the planning board, I'll be the alternate, Lee.
All right, so did we jump out of order here?
We just, we just.
We're back up to three.
Just, just remember that, there's an alternate for that one.
So, Justin and then Mike Kaminsky is alternate, okay, got it.
Or are we number three, okay?
We're on number nine now.
Now, but when we get done this list, we also have to vote them as ex officio members.
Correct.
Okay, so let's make sure to do that. Joint Loss, Justin, you were already,
Yep.
Appointed to that previously. Town Hall Restoration Committee Rep, I'm gonna keep doing the committee rep and Mike's gonna do the inspections. So, I'm just Town Hall Restoration Committee Rep because I know what they've been voting on the last three and a half years, so.
And then Mike.
He's gonna oversee the co, execution of the contract.
Yeah, so will we. Yeah, you're gonna oversee the execution of the contract and do the weekly or bi-weekly meetings.
Correct.
Yeah. Um, I have now the, uh, K T F C A rep. I don't mind continuing to do that if somebody else wants to take it or, that's, uh, I guess I'll do that, I think that Justin and you're gonna be the chair, you're gonna have a lot.
That's a quarterly meeting as well for K T F C A, right?
Town Forest Committee Rep.
They appoint the person they pick, and I think you were it last year, weren't you?
I was.
Let them come back who they want.
I wanted to push him for a tree, so I'll put possible Dave on that one.
Okay, I'll see if they can discuss that.
I've been doing the tree thing for three years, I haven't quite cut that down, so I gotta step up to the plate.
Number twelve, I'd make Woody, would you make, Woody as a representative?
Yeah.
Woody, we just nominated your name for the Concord Regional Solid Waste Co-op. You gonna continue that mission?
Yes.
Okay.
Energy?
I did it for the last two years, I would say, um,
Wanna try it, Justin?
Sure.
They only meet quarterly as well?
No, monthly. Uh, they sometimes, if they don't have a corner, they'll, 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 they'll not do a meeting if they don't have a corner and, um,
What day is that on?
It's, it's usually like a, uh, second Monday or, second or third Monday of every month.
Energy Committee is the second Monday, but they do a lot of Zoom meetings too.
For the last one, Wednesday night, all Zoom.
Oh, you do, okay.
Do you think you're gonna be overwhelmed doing this thing, meetings, Justin? I just don't wanna, I know you run a business as well, so you got planning.
Yeah, I think energy, I mean, if it's, maybe a little too much.
I, I can stay on that if you want.
Okay, so.
I'm gonna take it something that maybe meets.
Quarterly.
Quarterly.
I'll, I'll go ahead and do that then, give you a break then.
We'll do, um, I'll do the Historical Awareness Committee Rep, I guess. Dave and then maybe Justin, the capital improvements one?
That's gonna be very, very, uh, involved, we're gonna be resurrecting that to really take a look at.
How about you then, Mike?
I, I can do that, thing is, um, that's one of my, one of my goals for this year, because we haven't really looked at a, a long-term capital improvement plan, like a plan for this town for the next, where, where do we see a town in ten years? And the thing is, uh, the planning board did that master, like the master plan, if you remember?
Yep.
Like, that was only very peripheral, I think we have to get some meat, meat to the table, you might say, maybe have to start making some similar plans, think about capital improvement frameworks as a whole.
I'd really like the, um, the schedule that the school used to show the bond payments, and that would be what they typically were applying it to, is the capital improvement. This is what we wanna put there and keep it at a minimum, and this is where it would affect the tax rate going forward, and that's what we need to do is add that to our, uh, capital improvement. Donna's just started sending out emails, so I'll make sure that she includes you in that email group for that.
Okay, so these boards are done, I'd like to, uh,
I want to do the planning board, uh, planning board first as ex officios.
Yeah, we can do that first if you want. Um, I'd like to nominate Justin as the planning board, um, ex officio rep for the, um, Dunbarren Select Board.
I second.
Motion made, second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to do Mike Kaminsky as the co-planning board ex officio, um, representative for the select board rep, because he has several things that he's working on currently. Motion been made?
I second.
Motion made, second all in favor?
Aye.
Can you notify Donna of those?
I will, yeah.
Okay, thank you, Lee. I'd like to make a motion that we approve all of the appointed committees, um, as, as we listed and spoke around here tonight on this paperwork.
I'll second that.
Motion been made, second all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so keep our list and we'll set our calendars up and if you could, Joe Maria, copy this so she can assign the right people to the calendar.
Yeah, good idea, yeah.
Okay, thank you. We have appointments of officers besides this year, or are those not ready yet for us?
I don't know what Linda gave out, didn't you walk by my office and she gave you some appointments?
But I didn't think, uh, Board of Selectmen has strictly required that this letter be read into the minutes, tired to exclusively attach Linda Landry. It was pretty thick, I'll take that up on another part of the meeting, I don't think it's anything to do with this.
Okay, I thought she gave you appointments.
No, she handed me this on the way by. Um, we have a reappointment paperwork, um, that was brought to us by the Deputy Welfare. Uh, she recommended that Joe Marie Denencourt be appointed as Deputy Welfare Director for the term of three years, she has been instrumental in her position with excellent communication skills and professionalism. Respectfully submitted, Jeannie.
So, can I just bring you the history of the welfare director itself? Prior to, two years ago, it was an elected position, but as time went on, no one ever ran for it, so the selectmen ultimately appointed that individual and it moved forward every year of an appointment when it wasn't officially, um, adopted. So, we got that cleared up two years ago, it went into effect last year, whereas, uh, Jeannie was filling in as, uh, an appointed, um, uh, welfare director, was approached by the board and they were pleased with the, her performance, and when they approached her, she said she would be willing to do it for one year term, just to see if it would work with her. Now that she's retired, uh, she's doing a, a really good job in making sure that she's qualified, um, taking courses, education and whatnot, and so I think, did she speak to you at all about the length of term that she wants to?
For Joe Marie?
Well, for herself as well.
I'd say, like, make it three years to save paperwork, if she resigns after one year, we, we, there's nothing gonna stop her from, we're gonna have to appoint someone anyway, so I'd say make it three years to save on paperwork.
Well, it's also would be coincide with the deputy, so it would be the same.
Yep, so shoes, there's appointment paperwork here. So, as far as deputy welfare, we can say that, uh,
We can have that written up for next week.
Yep.
And that runs on the same term?
Yep.
The three years will run on the same.
Yep, they're both appointments because now they're no longer elected.
In the, in the past, it was kinda difficult because we, Jeannie's not a full-time employee here, and sometimes you'd have to leave a message and there was no one in the office to receive a, someone, say a resident came in with a need, there's, there was really no one in the office to take critical information down.
Yeah.
And so by having an, an alternate in the office here, uh, she can receive the critical information and she, in a timely manner, will pass it on to Jeannie.
Okay.
And it keeps A going smoothly.
It's worked out really well in the office.
Okay, Library Edition Project is next thing on the agenda, heard discussion at Joint Loss.
Well, and I, I, I also, uh, I did some work on that, so I can talk to that a little bit, uh, well, Justin, you wanna talk to that or shall I just talk with first?
Oh, you can talk and see if you've covered what I made up.
Well, the thing is, um,
You can go through the bullet points.
I am.
Okay.
The thing is, um, in the past, we've learned from our, uh, uh, past history that it's important to have a pre-construction meeting and invite, and people who should be invited there. And, uh, the people that I'm thinking about inviting, I've already, uh, pre-notified some of them. I talked to Jeff Trexler, he's who already stand, stood up, stood up and he's gonna be a structural engineer inspector on this project. Mike Cummings is gonna work with him as an adjunct, so things that Jeff doesn't know, Mike will supplement, supplement his knowledge base. So, those two will be our inspectors on that project. They will be, they've been invited into the pre-construction meeting, but we can't do anything yet because we gotta wait till we get the contract before we can act on it. So, we're just waiting that out. The point of contact, uh, for town officials in here, I'm gonna, I'm nominating, I could at least nominate, um, Lee Tomo as the point of contact, so if something comes in during the day, she can react, put, put the request for, whether it be the engineer to come by, whether it be that a payment's missing, she can be the point of contact for information and passing information to the right sources. Uh, one of the things we have to talk about during the, uh, pre-construction meeting, um, library operation and safe access during the construction. I'm convinced that, thing is, if we have to close, we close, but things we, I wanna work that out with, at this meeting, pre-construction meeting, by inviting the library trustee representative there, so they can give us input. But the thing is, uh, Mary's worked for almost two years as a remote, uh, remote library, if we have to go remote for a month, we do it, and just so we can get, the thing is,
One thing they did do, Mike, is, uh, during that time, they had a drop box there.
Exactly.
And then, so she would put books on top for, for people to pick up, so nobody else was actually coming in out of the building, so that might be something.
Exactly, and that's something I wanna get their input in, and things, I don't wanna dictate to them, but the thing is, that's a highly good, that's a good recommendation. So, that's another person we come in. The other thing is, I'm concerned with is, I think Leo brought it up, but things as we have construction here, parking is gonna be premium. Maybe some of the workers can park near the police station and park their private vehicles there so we can keep town business going, because we're gonna have construction vehicles, but we gotta talk about parking with the contractors. And then, um, lastly, um,
I think, I think the contractors, Mike, will utilize that parking there on each side.
Right, but I think, I wanna be sensitive to, to the representatives on School Street, I don't want School Street, um, I would recommend School Street not be parked on for, in front of these private homes.
No, I think that, you know,
In the immediate parking.
Yeah, don't park to the left and right of the addition in that parking area, so they're for now. Yeah, don't park to the left and right of the addition in that parking area, so they're for now.
Right, but we gotta set those rules out in a pre-construction meeting.
Yep.
And then lastly, um, um, there should be in the packet, um, a copy of the second floor uses. I'd recommend we start looking at that. I'm gonna put it as a, as a homework project, but we gotta come up with, um, any modifications for that. I don't wanna make a dis- any decisions tonight, I think we gotta talk about that and, uh, come to an agreement among ourselves as how we wanna use that. We have a draft and we talked a little bit about it before, whether we use our fees or something, uh, we gotta just, uh, clean it up. There were some things I thought were a little too much over the edge, like if you're gonna have a meeting, you can have a meeting during the day with five to 10 people. If they're sitting around on a table, they're not gonna be doing clogging upstairs, for example, during the day. Uh, we, we just gotta put some common sense to this. And I'm, I talked with a member of the, uh, Restoration Committee, I'm gonna call it a living document. Because it's gonna, it's gonna change as we go forward. We may find that we're too restrictive on some things we don't have to be, or just the opposite, we're too loose, we gotta tighten things up. And so, uh, but I think we should come up, have a target for a draft before the library's completed.
And the, uh, town hall restoration committee, um, I talked to her about, talking with Leanne about their total funds that they're gonna give to us there and get that squared away, so they're gonna be doing that step. But they're also gonna set lesser meetings than they've had, so they won't be meeting monthly, but maybe quarterly. And they're gonna stay in place to help work on items like this and the second floor and the renovations that are in the upstairs of the regular part of the building.
Because there's gonna be a few things that, uh, we were, Tom Cassano, for example, donated, I thought was fantastic.
Okay.
And not, and I will, I will stay on top of that stuff to make sure that the board is involved in all of those items, because we're ultimately responsible for them.
But the thing is, uh, I just wanna make sure we're off to a good start in this and not, I wanna make sure the right people at the table, uh, when we start this, uh, to include our inspectors. Because we've done projects in the past and we've, we've had like, told, we've quite a lot of the building permits. Mike's gonna be there making sure they pull up.
Right.
Uh, the inspectors, who's the inspector? So I got a, a firm commitment from, uh, the engineer in town, uh, who's gonna basically come to our, okay, I'm sorry.
That's alright. Um, so while you're going through this policy, keep in mind, maybe you might wanna look, you know, we always look to other towns, see how they do things. We always do that.
Absolutely.
For everything, it doesn't matter what. So maybe you might wanna ask different towns, what do they do with their rentals with, you know, uh, Bo, uh, their spaces, you know?
Good, good idea.
And that way there, it gives you an idea, because again, as I said before, when that place, things are starting to get ruined in there, and then you have to come up, I know you'll take it out of the, uh, you know, the general fund for the building, but, building maintenance. But the thing is, if we don't have to, if there's a kitty there to cover the, the, some of these costs.
One of the suggestions I, I put forward, uh, you know, was that, uh, almost a user fee, that, actually, um, the two things, part of the user fee, to pay someone to come in, open, unsecure, open the building, uh, adjust the heat settings, close the, then at the, after the end of the, the activity, close the building, adjust the heat settings and make sure the trash is picked up, carrying, ferry out. And then maybe if there's a few dollars left over, we put it into like a maintenance fund, a capital, like a capital improvement fund or capital maintenance fund, to maintain the space.
Maintenance fund, you know, really need a, a, a fund there to maintain.
Yeah, we're not talking about big dollars, but enough to say, let's say, three, ten, eight, five years from now, the floor's become so scratched, we have to refinish them again. We may have enough to do.
But, and then the other thing I wanted to, the guys, to keep in mind is what the engineer said about the metal ceiling downstairs. Remember what he, what, I'm not even gonna mention the name, but what the engineer said about the ceiling downstairs, the tin ceiling.
Yeah, easy watch out for it to make sure it doesn't become loose.
It's, he said it should be reinforced because that has a chance to.
Or tack back up.
Yeah, has a good chance of coming down and so you start having a lot of stuff happening up there. You know, I'm just trying to bring that to your attention to remember that, because I remember there was talk about going in there maybe and putting some, uh, like pins in certain locations to help hold it up.
Yeah.
You know, and I'm just saying, it, before the thing comes down, if you got, I'm reading up to 250 people. And if you, if people are dancing up there, whatever, you know what I'm saying? There's a lot of vibration going on and also.
But we're not doing clogging, no, no clogging.
I know, but you might have that Irish dancing that's going on, you know?
Can I just remind the board that if you set any type of, uh, fees that you, you might think will help, there's always gotta be an expense line to cover the cost, like a, like we have a janitor line for cleaning. There may have to be a separate line to pay that one under the expenses on the budget side and then offset by the revenues. But then the revenues lapse at the end of the, the year, the calendar year, they can't be carried over for, um.
This, um, this topic has been brought up a lot at those, um, committee meetings. So as we get closer to using that, I'll make sure we have Mike come to one of them meetings and then go through the discussions on. Mary did a great job pulling together other libraries and used like the Hoppington, you know, using their function.
Well, there you go, that's what.
She, um, she did all that research, I think she reached out to maybe 15 of them.
Oh, great.
Took those responses, correlated them, and from that, we developed that policy use. We stayed away from, um, charging, and I'll tell you the reason why is the, um, you know, most people that are using it are taxpayers in the town. And I always pushed to make sure that it was committee first and all the other town entities. One, one of the most important thing is everybody that's using that, it's gonna be a town entity of some sort. There are a couple of 501Cs that will be probably using that space, but in the same token, the Dunbarton residents, the things that they're doing for their fundraisers or whatever they're doing, they're doing for the town of Dunbarton typically. So it's kinda hard to charge a fee when they're doing something to, you know, like raise money for some event in Dunbarton. It's almost like a double sword. And so we, we stayed away from them in this policy only because we felt that even though it was a minor amount, um, you, you would use them for the 501Cs, but you wouldn't use them for the other ones, but they were all kinda similar. Like you wouldn't use them for forage, but a 501C that's kind of a similar fundraising type thing, you'd be charged. So we stayed away from it only because it was kind of overlapping and we thought that once the town has a maintenance, but like we have the girl cleaning here. Well, we'll know what that cleaning is, and then we also thought about unlocking the door and locking the doors as we do here, as we do with key codes.
Yep.
Then you know who accessed the building and then who closed the building.
Yeah.
By the key code, so you know who's in there and that person is responsible. If they don't, if they go through, we found out that, okay, the garden club was in there and they're leaving the place a mess, then, you know, it'll be up to the board to either talk to them or square them away. That, that was our thought at those meetings.
So those codes can be changed all the time, or is everybody gonna, okay?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. It's a little bit of a cost, but it actually has worked out well for anyone that is doing business without having to give these keys that will continue to be out there.
It works so well for here, because if we take somebody and we don't want them to access the building, their code's gone.
We, we take them off, yep, yep.
So.
Another thing to consider too is an automatic heat thermostat, whereas after a certain time, it turns down so that there's less people involved with having to get up there and remember.
Yeah, so it's not forgotten all weekend.
We won't have to worry about them touching the thermostat there now. It all comes up from the bottom.
I understand, this building has had some issues with heating over the weekend left on too.
Oh, we have.
But we don't have to worry about them touching the heating up there, there isn't any, it all comes up from downstairs. It's the library.
The thing is, I, I think there'll be some debate here.
Yeah, yeah, right, yeah.
There'll be some debate.
I'm, I'm here and then just, you know, I have the chance to voice what I see, that's all.
And I'm just giving you.
Talking to you guys.
Then I'm just giving you, those are the ideas that were developed in there, and I mean, they've been talking about that stuff for three and a half years, they've kinda gone through a lot of it already.
But what I, what, what, what we, what no one wants to see is an investment go down the tubes.
Right.
Right.
That's the bottom line.
Yeah, I forgot about the ceiling thing.
Yeah.
That's critical.
I hadn't forgot about it.
Yeah.
Um, I know that for some of the pipes there and the mounting of the pipes for the sprinkler, he's been mounting them there and I've been watching the panels. And a couple of them are adjusting a little bit, so, um, you know, I don't know if you even hire anybody to pin that stuff anymore, it's not, hasn't been done in a hundred years, so. We'll have to work on getting somebody to maybe do that.
Gorilla glue.
Gorilla glue.
Yeah, but you gotta get back there to put it.
With a syringe. Okay.
Okay, so that's, uh.
We take it, but that, that's where we are with the library, I just wanna say, I think we're off to a start. Leanne has already submitted a signed contract, not, excuse me, the signed bid to the contractor, Leanne, to confirm that, it's went forward?
What's that?
The bid that we signed, it's been, the, the contract's been notified?
You said you would be taking care of that.
Yep, I did notify him too.
Okay, and so the only thing we're wait, we're waiting on, in the deadline, we, we'll probably give him a tickler in a week or so.
Yeah, and they, they're just waiting to get back from, uh, like the elevator company and all those companies to make sure they.
He said he had to, he, he had to make his calls with his subs.
He's trying to make everybody hold their numbers to what he originally bid there to try and keep it as close to that as possible. But this COVID is really messing everything up, but I think he's had like 90% of his people back and, uh, the elevator company will opt, but the girl that works is gonna try and hold the number, the last I heard from them, so.
Okay.
I'll let, uh, once he gets through with the contract, I'll let you guys deal with that.
Yeah, and then as soon as we get that, we, we can plan a construction meeting. Great construction meeting.
Before we go any further?
Yep.
Justin attended our joint loss meeting and there were some things brought up, I, if you could just touch on those.
Yep.
And it's related to the, the library, of course.
Of course, was the library the topic this time?
Yeah.
Because guys go to different buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah, we went, did a walk through there after the meeting. I think basically, I, I mean, we kinda touched on most of the things we had talked about. They were concerned about the library operation and the safety of the, you know, handicapped, uh, patrons going in and out during construction, which I was unaware about the, you know, the drop box and things of that nature. So I, I feel like most of this stuff will be covered in the pre-construction, construction meeting, um, someone had talked about and maybe an idea thrown around about maybe doing the walkway, um, do that as a priority to get.
Yeah, the, the only thing about the walkway, I, they, they gotta bring in machinery to bring anything in. I don't want the walkway to be impediment to new, and have it broken up.
Correct.
And it generally is the, one of the last items you do as you're pulling away from the building.
Exactly, so that was my thought.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think it's, we did COVID before, I think we can do COVID again for a different reason.
Yeah, and again, you have to break.
They would take care of that.
You have to break an egg to make a cake, so there's gonna have to be some give and take on everybody's part to enjoy the.
And you know, Mary, Mary's always, always running nice programs, uh, during COVID, at the like gazebo outside and when it's nice weather in the summer.
Um, I did speak with Mary, cause as she knows, she's called here, she called me and as I've been doing my inspections on the sprinklers, she asked me about it and she said, you know, I have no problem with adjusting, I know this is a good thing that's gonna go on for the library and for the building. And she's willing to adjust, go back to those type of drop off. And she did say that, you know, using that, um.
Gazebo.
Gazebo area was a great idea and she's probably gonna go back to that anyway, so she sounded very willing to work with us.
Jeff said he and Pete would take care of moving her drop box to where she wants, because, um, they, they obviously need it to be off to the side if she's gonna start using it again and, uh, she was trying to make it as easy as possible for patrons. Yeah.
Another thing they were concerned about was, uh, the line bench out there and I said, you know, we're obviously gonna take care of that, move it, maybe, uh, over by the other benches, once it's finished, we'll get it over there somewhere. She said they kinda wanted to keep that one close to the front door, but we'll see how the whole layout ends up after we're done and see where the spot works best for it. But the biggest thing I told them, that, you know, they're gonna start attending whenever we do have the, um, Dunbarton Town Restoration Committee meetings. Two of the trustees generally come with Mary, so they're gonna attend those meetings, so we'll just kinda keep it fluid where.
Yeah, and in the great construction meeting, I'm gonna ask for Mary, you know, this one, as, again, one member of the, uh, representative of the trustees. Because the trustees are really in control, Mary's just employee there, so the trustees need to be part of it.
Yeah. Yeah, and just make sure, you know, we control the building and they are kind of in that first floor space.
Right, but the thing is, it's good, I think what we're doing right here, we're notifying all parties ahead of time.
Yeah.
And we, we've been remiss in the past by some, doing something and, oh, we've got to talk to the building needs, but no cost permits.
Yeah.
And so we, we got, I think we got a plan and it started.
And you know, and once that's done, she's gonna have nice space to use during the week when she is open up for reading or whatever, turn it out.
Yeah, I mean, she's had all these evening programs before.
Yep.
And the thing is, standing alone downstairs sometimes.
Okay.
There was, in joint loss, there was a couple of other things that we had inspected, um, I can go over those few things at times in time. Um, in the entrance, needs to be an ADA compliant fixed door at the front of the building. The Stark Highway old vestibule to the library. Um, I noticed, uh, there was some light showing around the whole door, that's what we had observed at that time. So I think he's just concerned about the seal, um, that's a ace.
Who was talking about the ADA door there?
Mike.
Kaminsky?
Cummings.
No, Cummings, so they did a walkthrough, is that when we discussed that?
Is Mike on your board too?
Yes, he's the chair in the bar, yeah.
Okay. Um, he said on the front entry today's being ADA, is he talking in the back of the building now?
No, we're using the front entrance.
Oh, I don't think we're gonna use that front entrance, as Mike said, we're gonna do the drop box, like, to, to try and do an entryway to that with aluminum entry and then have grass there or try and do a temporary walkway. It's a, quite an expense, so I think we're gonna go back to what Mary was doing last year and continue on that process.
That wasn't, uh, that's not what this pertaining to, the door and the vestibule going into the library itself.
Oh, that's, that's.
So what he observed, observed and brought up was that threshold is above the quarter inch limit, building code limit right now. So he's suggesting that that gets shaved down or repaired, so it means E, ADA compliance.
Oh, so it's inside the building.
Yeah, so it's the door going from that.
foyer into the library itself, the smart.
Into the library, yeah, correct.
And when we have the new handicap door, the entrance, will there be a need of that?
Nope, shouldn't be.
So.
Yeah, well, that, 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 that door is gonna be mainly for egress, as I thought.
Yeah, so I think that, uh, I don't think it'll be an issue once we do.
Don't they have like rubber inserts where you can create that like?
Tapered look.
Tapered thing for temporary?
I don't know if they're, there's, there's some aluminum ones, but that's a wood floor, it'd look kinda hacky, I think.
But for, for temporary, I don't know.
But the thing is, I, I, I foresee during the construction phase, the library shut down for like 30 days.
Yeah.
Because the thing is, that would give the contractor the ability to, to work unimpeded. And the thing is, if he's gonna always continually work around the library patrons.
And the hours and everything else.
Yeah, and the thing is, I think it's, we wanna give him the opportunity to proceed.
What we'll do is, um, I think, once you find out, when you talk with Mary, instead of shutting it down, it'll be a complete, she'll be in there, people you call, ask for a book and she'll bring them over here to the drop box.
As we said, the COVID, COVID.
Yeah, COVID, oh, yeah.
Another thing at that same door, we had noticed coming from the foyer into the library, so if you're on the foyer side, the floor is spongy at that point.
I notice that too.
Yeah, cause, well, we had figured it out because we held the door open with a doorstop. I stepped through, right next to the door, the floor came down and the door obviously closes.
And I don't know if it's just the hardwood bouncing, it doesn't feel like it's a structural sponge, it almost feels like the hardwood has a.
Yeah, it's very worn out right there that.
No, no sawdust for termites?
No.
No, no. Um, and also, I think moving forward in the, after the construction phase, so the door can be locked from the actual library to the bathrooms on the first floor, as though bathrooms still will be accessible, from my understanding, to be used, and that door doesn't have a up-to-date lock on it, so she can lock access, it just has a regular turn off.
So through the foyer, you can access the bathrooms to the left through a door, and what she's saying is the door on the backside does not lock, so they.
It just has a regular turn off, on the side turn off.
When, when we get towards the end of construction, I think the handyman could help us with that one.
Yeah, just adding a simple lock, it's not, not the end of the world, it doesn't have to, just plenty means of egress, so it doesn't have to be a crash bar. I think just a simple dentable.
For, for security reasons.
Correct. Um, uh, there's another note here that old stairs need to be looked at and repaired. They did not meet, meaning, meet egress, which I don't think that's gonna be an issue at, once the new construction is, uh, commenced. Um, also in the front of the foyer, there's a fire extinguisher that needs some, um, uh, stripped that just showing the location of it. It is there, but it just needs, um, some sort of notification of the location. Yeah, exactly, pretty simple.
Our handyman can do that now, correct, Lee?
Yeah, I thought that when they did the inspections annually, they had to provide that wherever they hung them.
We can ask fire chief, look at that.
Is that something that they, they don't do, we have to do it, we have to mark it, okay?
Yeah, there is two fire extinguishers.
Order some stickers or something.
Dark door, and it has it, the front one doesn't. Um, the emergency lights are on the fritz there, for some reason, we did try it when we were there, Woody was with us. Uh, they did come on and all of a sudden they make a loud, obnoxious noise, uh, flickering light, um.
Well, why don't we get the electrician to? One of the electricians put in emergency light, and I think they did them down yours too, didn't they, Woody?
Yeah, well, I was already big, they didn't.
How, did they locate it?
They look old. When you push it, it comes on.
They look old, when you push it, it comes on and it doesn't do nothing.
Yeah, we thought it was okay.
And all of a sudden, it starts buzzing, and they start to go dim, and then it starts flashing.
Yeah.
Then it stays on for a little bit, and it stays on, stays on.
Is that electrical and the electrician has to do those?
Yeah, it would be best for electrician, but I think they're hardwired, right?
Like Chief Wiggins said, nine times out of ten, it's cheaper to buy the whole unit than it is to fix it or change a battery.
And we tried the one by the bathroom, we couldn't reach up to the one in the foyer, but we, someone should look at that one as well.
So all of them, basically, we need.
Yeah, I would just test them all and make sure they're all.
Do we wanna wait until the construction's complete before we start messing around with them?
I think we could do those, that's a small enough item, we can do that, it's inside.
Justin, is it the, is it the, is it that, what is it exactly?
Yeah, it doesn't have an exit, exit thing, but it still has that look to it, it's a box with two lights up on the top.
So it's the emergency lighting for at the exits, check them all.
Yeah, we need the exit sign and then the lights.
Well, it's not at the, I mean, it's not technically above the door, so I don't know if it is required as the exits.
When you go where the bathrooms are.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
It's on the wall right there.
Small spaces be able to turn on.
And then in the foyer, there's just one in the center there, it's not denoting the exit.
Oh, that could be, uh, do you wanna do that before the construction starts? I mean, you're probably gonna require a lot of other things upstairs.
Well, I know we gotta have the panel work done, cause we have to pay for the wiring to the, to the, um.
Do I just uh, have our electrician do that?
When he does that, cause it won't even be there again, cause once the sprinkler gets done. We have to pay to have electrician come in to wire the pump for the sprinkler on a separate panel. That was always part of the deal, that was excluded from theirs, so with that, we might be able to hire the. Contractor's electrician, cause he's gonna be down there working on the uh, panel anyway. So with the chance.
We're gonna ask for a denim.
Well, not a denim, just an additional thing for him to do.
If he wants to work, well, we can have our own, yeah, we can just go in there.
Yeah, it seems silly to have a whole bunch of different ones, but you're right, I think we can wait for that a little bit.
Okay, um, at the top of that same door, there, there's no emergency sign like that, um.
Exit sign?
Exit sign with the emergency lights facing in towards the library, there's no emerg- lighted sign there.
At the front door?
At the same door we're talking about going into the library, from the foyer.
Again, it's busy.
Yeah, those are gonna have to be addressed when we're using them upstairs.
Right, this hasn't been used in thirty years.
Cause I think we want the exit to be out the other way at that point, out the front or the back doors, I guess.
So there's egress.
We put the new double door there, there's gonna be a light like that above that one saying exit.
Right.
That's right, yeah.
So.
Maybe a few things that be addressed at the end of construction.
Right, on the overlap.
Cause e- even there was another mention that, um, by her, her uh, desk now. She was concerned after construction that there may not be enough sufficient lighting right there as well, which we could always look at at the, at the end of the project, we can.
She told me about that.
Yeah, exactly, it's a lot of speculation.
We'll be getting add another light.
Oh, you like to.
There's a, there's a globe there now, if we had to change to strip lighting, if it was real.
Right.
We're really needed, we have to look at it at that time.
Yep.
Tell me a sign in the desk though. Okay, so I think, I think the bottom line, I think when I'm reading between the lines, there's a lot of little incidentals we're gonna have to pick up. Uh, to bring the bottom library up to date, and as we look, as we do the, the upper floor, we have to be looking, don't forget about the bottom floor either.
Yeah, I don't think they're huge items, but I think that.
Right.
Few things need to be.
And those, are those, is that gonna be in the minutes, your inspection?
It can be. Do you want to do it?
I just wanna make sure that we don't forget it, I just would get.
Yeah.
I can give you the back end of it. This is our joint loss committee.
Right, right, as long as I have like the joint loss minutes, then we'll.
You want to take a copy of the last page, so you can put it in the minutes?
Did, I think it's gonna become part of the minutes, the inspection, we typically include the.
Yeah, this, this is the.
With the minutes, yeah.
Do you have inspection?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thanks for the update, Justin.
Yep.
All right, now we've got to sign the MS two thirty twos, uh, reported appropriations, actually voted on by the legislative body, they do twenty days after.
That does include the uh, amendment of the operating budget, we add that eleven hundred and forty seven dollars for the library's operating budget.
Okay, thank you.
Right, it's a small change of eight.
We had a complaint here of a damaged mailbox, um, on Mansion Road. During the snowstorms, it was hit multiple times, was broken at the base. Apparently one of a few in the area, it was posted. No different than others in the neighborhood, this is the second season I offer places, I would like to be compensated. Have Jeff approached us at all?
I did coffee handle on it, I have not heard background, I can address, I can follow up with him, see.
It's been our response so far that we do not uh, replace mailbox posts.
Idents.
And I hate to go down through the path where we start from, cause it will. It'll be a revolving door.
I think in um, in the hard roads to travel, there is a section that basically outlines the town's right of way, and if. If it seems to be a reoccurring problem, typically what the road agent will do is meet with the homeowner to, to try to. Make a recommendation as to where they could put their box and.
And that's, that's where, if Jeff could act on that, I think with that action, that would be perfect.
I think that's probably.
Yeah, just to make sure, maybe it is.
Right.
Closer to the road than others, I mean, trucks are big, so gotta get down the road.
Things in the past, uh, some power drivers where they thought they, that's personally negligent, they made a personal uh, reach out to the homeowner, and they paid for a new mailbox. Out of their own pocket.
Yeah.
And that's a, that's a one-on-one between the power driver and the owner, because we have some very conscientious power drivers who do a great job. And they feel bad sometimes when they break up their blocks, and you know, I live up to that.
I don't think it's intentional, ever.
Right.
You know?
But the, but the thing is, it could be a, just, you know, in a snowstorm, it can be very difficult sometimes.
Yeah, the car coming the other way.
Sometimes just the weight of the snow.
Yep, exactly.
We have a update of a residence address change per RSA two thirty one. Colon one three three dash A, and it needs a signature.
So my office has been working with John Wiggins on this, um. They're basically saying that uh, E nine one one has the control and authority to uh, readdress or reassign address numbers to residents. And um, John Wiggins asked that the board support him in this, because in the event the uh, owner does not do it voluntarily. Then we have to have a public hearing, the public hearing result will still say you have to change your number, but in this, this letter is just basically. Putting him on notice that this is what we need you to do, please comply, and if not, then the next step is a public hearing, which will still end in uh. The owner having to change their address.
So this is in um, in response to a subdivision done near the neighborhood, and when a subdivision is done, the. Nine one one addresses often have time to change or has, or has to change, so I signed my name to it. I don't mind supporting the fire department on that.
And Mary signed it, you guys signed the all.
So we'll send that out to serve my mail, and I'll also send a copy in regular mail, just so that they.
And keep a copy for our records, of course.
We didn't let the fire chief know we took care of that.
Yeah, he did come by and approve the letter, so.
Uh, request for raffle permit from the town to support the four H club held at the Pioneer Sportsman's. Dear Select Board, this is to inform the board under New Hampshire RSA two eighty seven A Pioneer Crew five five six four H Club. Wish to host, hosted by Pioneer Sportsman's, a New Hampshire nonprofit organization is planning on running. One or more fundraising raffles to support our four H program again this year. Hence, we would, we would like the permit from the Board of Selectmen.
So the reason for this is because the town does not have an official policy or a permit. Raffle permit, uh, permit in place, so in order for him to comply with his RSA, he's uh, developed this, that the selectmen has approved in the past. But it kinda keeps everything on record that we.
No, I have a, I have a potential revenue generator, you know, with all the raffles Dawn has, right? If we charge a hundred dollars per raffle, we could make a killing.
Yeah.
And Dawn, if you're listening, has a little bit of humor.
Democrats always looking for free money.
So consensus is there, there's no issue with, um.
I got more, I got more Republican jokes, Dave, don't forget.
I know, I know.
And they're true.
Sure.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, we don't wanna go there.
I've been here for, long enough to see them.
Mailbox.
You want me to date it?
Yeah.
What's the date today?
Seventeen.
You can't ask, cause if you're gonna date it. I guess I do have some.
I thought she gave you a pack.
I, I, I was looking in the paperwork for it, I guess she did give it to me with this. Okay, this is from Linda Landry, the town clerk, I have contacted Board and Committee Chairs regarding members. Whose terms are expiring and have prepared appointment papers for those that have been confirmed to date. If you guys would like, I can read them off of this list here, and then we can approve it once and then just sign them.
That sounds like a good plan.
Cause I've, we've taken a long time to do this before. Alternate for the cemetery trustee, Linda Gray, term twenty twenty three. Energy Committee, George Holt, twenty twenty five, Robert A Ray, twenty twenty five. Historical Awareness Committee, Leon C Mullin, twenty twenty three, Frederick J Mullin. Twenty twenty three, William T Zeller, twenty twenty four. He's a DES liaison. Donna Dunn, twenty twenty five, Gail Martel, twenty twenty five. Old Home Day Committee, Don J Larson, twenty twenty three, George E Mescal, twenty twenty three, John Stevens, twenty twenty three. Planning Board, Jeff A Crosby, twenty twenty five, Charles E Frost Junior, twenty twenty five. Deputy Tax Collector, Lean Como, twenty twenty five. Town Hall Restoration Committee, Mary Sue Bracy, twenty twenty three, Normal Lamarche, twenty twenty three. Don J Larson, twenty twenty three, Edith Larson, twenty twenty three, Shelley Westenberg, twenty twenty three. Zorny Board of Adjustments, Allison Valeries, twenty twenty five.
I'll second those nominations.
Motion has been made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's sign away. Keep asking, I'm holding mic, hey?
Smoothest we ever done it.
Yeah, you're getting good at this. More efficient.
I think it's the first year, someone told me how to do it, but I was reading one by one.
I did too.
You have another pile? Yeah, you sure do. It's on its way.
Lee, will you let the um. Appropriate boards know which one of us selectmen are assigned to them now?
Yeah.
Just so we get notified of different meetings, I guess. One more here, Mike can. Okay. That goes, yeah. Well, there's signers, I'm gonna start some mailbox items. We have a letter from Attorney Pat, Pat Yaco. Stating that she's gonna address the telephone pole situation on Kelsey Rowan as part of the subdivision process, so she's asked for, um. She's asked for what looks like senior electric project coordinator.
I can quickly, I commented that, thing is, uh, the first quote that was given by Unitel for those pole regulations. Were, were, was high, but it was a quote directed to Unitel, and she wanted to see if they were actually gonna be a little bit lower, so it was a second request to the company.
Yep. And that's what they went on part of their subdivision process.
Correct.
Woody gave us a heads up earlier in the week that the paper baler went down, we're gonna try and figure out what was broken. Thank you for doing that, Woody, I'm sure we talked about that later. Um, another email from Woody, I haven't seen this one yet, but it looks like it's about repairing the fencing down there on the. Transfer station that has some damage.
When did that occur? This is new damage?
It was at some point last fall.
Okay. Is it on the new fencing?
Yeah, we wanna keep it up to snuff, so it'll probably be good to get it done. And the last thing is, we have some emails in reference to transfer station position that we posted last week.
I understand we have some candidates potentially?
We do. And um, we'll probably talk about scheduling those later tonight as well, for interviews. To try and beat our peak season here coming up this spring and get some people trained. That's all I have for the mailbox items, the town clerk gave me a letter here, I'll read into the. Meeting minutes. She asked that it be read at this meeting, I guess. Okay, Dunbar and Town Board Selectmen, I'd like to begin by expressing with my regrets. That the events of last Thursday's meeting turned into such a confusing mess. I would like to ensure everyone involved, whether directly or by their own choosing. Understands the missing pieces that contributed to those events, and there are many. As you know, I contacted the board members and the town administrator after the Board of Selected Marshes meeting. Apologizing for my deputy appearing before the board without my formal invitation. Hope and I have had several lengthy discussions regarding this, and as it turns out, she was invited to appear before the board. I contacted Selectmen now for clarification, he told me that during their, his and Hope's conversation. On Tuesday, March eighth, that he did suggest that she come to the board with concerns. I have no doubt that his suggestion was delivered and earnest, but may not have been conveyed specifically to late enough. Page thirty of the town's personal manual outlines the procedure for resolution, see attached. In the minutes of the Board of Selectmen Workshop of February third, where office staff concerns were discussed. Staff was told these concerns need to be brought to a selectmen meeting to be addressed. That's meeting, one of our meetings here. That's meaning, one of our meetings here. Hope took the board up on both offers, and I have apologized for her not investigating further before reacting. I have had the opportunity to review Hope's written presentation, she is correct in that these issues that have gone on. Through the chain of command and may continue to go on unresolved. I will bring these concerns to the board at a later date. We are fortunate to have Hope, both as a coworker and as employer for our town, she is efficient, she is thorough. And an absolute pleasure to work with, my point here is not to blame. But to view this as an opportunity for all to identify and correct the weakness in our communications with each other. And with the links of the chain of command. I have enjoyed working with this board and look forward to working together on this and other areas. In a way that will ensure that all are heard, respectfully Linda Landry, Town Clerk.
I'd like to give kudos to Linda, I think it's, uh, it's essentially what I agree with, I agree with her. It was, uh, it's a matter of making effective communications as we go forward, I'll leave it at that. And I look forward to hearing from Linda about her concern, about her recommendations as a department clerk. And elected official, as a town clerk.
Okay, um, Lean, if we could, for the Board of Selectmen, I'll get a copy of that.
And now it's from the personal?
It says it is, yeah.
Okay.
I haven't had a chance to read thoroughly through, but. I'll put it in the mail, if you could just send it out to us by email, we'll, we'd be a pleasure and. Thank her for that letter, it, uh, like you said, doesn't solve anything, but at least, uh. Sets up that there are some discrepancies on what they should do, is different stuff and. That's why I didn't have her come into the meeting last week, I did want her to get blindsided, um.
Totally agree, I agree.
Until she had time to review it, so. Okay, that being said, I'll bring it back for public comment one more time.
Thank you.
Woody, you're on the agenda, so you're good. So I'll bring it back to the board only for the fact that, um, once we get out of non-public, so we have to go in, a lot of times the public is gone. So Lean, do you have anything for the board?
I did, and I did not print it, I forwarded to the board the, um, puppy mail acknowledgement.
Yeah.
Did it, do you have a chance to read it? Are you okay with that letter?
I did read it, and I think it's good.
Okay, just, you have corrected the one name that I didn't have.
Correct, she had the wrong, uh, well, we identified the wrong state senator.
Okay.
So what I'll do then is make that update and then just put it in the, uh, AP payroll. Do you just sign off on, and then once it's signed, I'll get it mailed out.
Okay.
Okay, good.
It's not a real urgent thing, it's just, the vote does say that, and.
We have to do it.
Based on the, um, vote.
Do we have a certain amount of days, or?
No, not that long, no.
I'd say the sooner the better, it's cause I think you're, you're, you're doing it timely manner.
Yeah. Things that were pending from last week, pest control, that's still a work in progress, I have not had a chance to do that. Um, I, and I've started the bond application, but I'm having difficulties getting in there and editing it, so that's something that I have to work with. Tech support, because I've reached out to the bond bank, she said there is no, there are no protections on it, that I should be able to use it, so I have to work with my. Tech support to fix that. Still working with the auditor to finalize the last questionnaires, they should have that, uh, ready to release within the next week or two. We have a lot of, uh, primex, unemployment, workers comp, and property liability that are due by the end of the month, that I'll be working to update. Our information on, uh, Apar reporting is due, um, the end of, uh, beginning of April. So I'll be working on that, and then depending on, um, the direction of the board, I know that we have talked about. Um, I'm working with Jeff to do an RFP for the paving, now that the bond is passed, but the RFP for roof, for the roofs. We have two buildings that have potential for needing attention. Um, I'm concerned that the funding that we have with all the little things that we're gonna continue to, uh, spend down, if there will be enough funding to do.
I have a third quote coming to you, I think it came measured last Friday or Saturday, here at the town office.
Oh, he did? I didn't, I'm not aware of it.
So I do have a third bid coming to you for that roof, so, um.
They, they should be sealed bid.
Yep, it's gonna be sealed up for you, so.
I'd like to comment on that data, but, but, thing is, we may have cut the budget, uh, to maintenance line a little too tight this year. And, um, I think if we can defer anything, uh, into the next ca- uh, calendar year, we should try to do so. In other words, if the roof's not leaking, we know it has to be done, we should probably plan on that by plus up the line for next year.
What was the, what was the talk about, they're leaking the, uh?
Well, he's gonna be getting some electrical panel work done, and that's in the location of where it's leaking.
Who is?
The, the fire department.
Well, the fire department's one thing, but I'm talking about this building.
I'm talking about this building too.
The leaking is only, only occurs on the certain types of rain weather, and it's in the vault. Um, I'm not aware of any other leaking elsewhere, but we are losing a, a large number of, of tiles. Off the front of the building, so it's.
When you, we say the front, what are you talking about?
Well, my, my office, about thirteen sections of, of roofs shingles, uh, just last week.
Oh, shingles are falling off.
Shingles, they're falling off the, the building.
That may, that may drive the, uh, terrain a little bit.
Yeah, um.
I don't know what.
I will, uh, I will say that I think this new quote might come in substantially lower, so when you receive it next week. Open it up and we'll present it, but we will talk about the dollar amount and see how it comes out.
Yeah, but I think, I think as we go down this year, um, we got a couple whammies hitting us. Fuel prices gonna hit us hard, I think we're not, we didn't really anticipate it going up that high, uh, the heating costs are gonna go up. And the thing is, I just wanna be a little more, uh, conservative in our approach as we, this year, again, if we need to, it, it may be a hard year, because.
Well, it's even like I thought about Mike on the fire department, because that roof is so large. Um, maybe we'll get the estimate process going, cause it really takes a while to get.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, look at that as part of the budget for next year, because if it's an entire roof, it's something that should be scheduled and. It's more of a capital improvement over there than anything, so.
Yeah, and the thing is, uh, we, we, but we, I'm glad we're getting it started.
Yeah.
Thing is, I think Lean pointed out, most of the contracts have come in and where they try to patch it, but they won't warrant it, and they, they don't know if it's gonna work or not. Most of them suggested an entire new roof, and that's what the past people have followed.
And the issue with that is that John says that it's not engineered for a full roof, so we have to be careful with. What we propose to put on there, I don't know how.
May need some engineering.
And last, and last week, um, we did spend some money out of that, um. Motion there, where we did the motions for the two things on the town hall.
Yeah.
We should keep a good running tally of that, so that we always have an idea how much we have left in there.
Yeah, because we don't wanna, I don't wanna end the year, uh, basically, someone comes to me and we have nothing to do, then we have a special town meeting to withdraw money. If, uh, this is building goes unsafe for reasons, it's leaking water.
I do plan on, um, bringing the first quarter expenses to the board on the first week of April, and I. That will be a priority for me to monitor that, because there are other incidentals, just as I said last year, they, they came, they added up to almost eight, thirty eight thousand dollars. For the things that happened to break as we.
Do business.
And we can't just say I need this, you know, a dollar amount, that's why it's been such a, it's been nice to have that large sum to be able to. Do all these things that creep up, that pop up when we're not expecting them.
Okay.
I can stop by too and help you get over that, go through that RFP, that, just make it apples for apples.
For the roof.
But the bid should be open at this, at this meeting here, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think back to that fire station roof, it wasn't that it, it, because, uh, I guess the way that it's structurally made, it. Can't be ins, can't be insulated, so it has to be a metal roof for the water to shed, because it can't hold the snow load. Of conventional shingles is what I think.
Is that what it is? I thought metal shingles, metal was heavier than shingles.
No, it's for snow loading.
He said, yeah, he said.
Even though it's getting older, it doesn't shed the snow like it used to, the building is a lake aged steel building, and they want the snow off the building, so.
Right, right.
And that's why you said that.
We're gonna have to get up there.
Cause they had talked about, turn out joint loss, so, I'm sorry. And then, uh, if it's my turn, uh, the pest, I did reach out to the company I had worked for, uh, worked with in the past.
Yeah.
And, um, they're gonna submit a bid as well, he called me, he was here, I don't think you were here.
This is big for?
Uh, the pest around here.
Yeah.
So, just.
A couple different options.
For this benefit, we have a policy in place that was voted on at town meeting, anything less than ten thousand dollars, cause we had it, we had it, um. Amended, because it was just too restrictive with the small cost that we had to put everything out to RFP and or post it in the newspaper. It was very costly for the town, so anything that you anticipate is gonna be less than ten thousand, we have to do our due diligence and get three telephone quotes. With supporting records for those quotes, and then anything that starts to come in higher than the ten thousand. Then you have to kind of put it back and just look at it and say that we need to put this out to sealed bid, and that's where. And unfortunately, we start sometimes with good intentions, and then all of a sudden, it's like, oh my gosh, this is twenty thousand, thirty thousand, and. And you really do have to put it out to sealed.
Yeah, I don't think this will get nearly to that, I think, I had mentioned doing an annual plan of, or a quarterly. Service here, or just a one time thing, so we can decide that as a board of which direction we want to.
I do have a couple business cards on my desk, so.
As a corollary to that, can I just ask one question? Uh, the environmental report that you had to study done?
I sent them out an email, a follow up email last week, and she said it was, um, still in.
Created writing?
Yeah, I don't know, but she, she said it should be available.
We already got one back now?
We, all we got was an email saying that it's i- in the works, and that, um.
There were no major concerns.
There were no major concerns, there were spores, what that meant, I have no idea, but I forwarded it to the building inspector, who's the health officer. And we're just waiting, and I asked Mike actually to pick up the phone.
I was gonna say, Mike was gonna reach out and, uh, to that as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So all these little things will add up quickly, and so I just wanna be cautious and not.
Bring it back to Mike, I guess.
I'm just gonna go in and, I'll open in a few minutes.
And Justin, do you have anything further?
I think we got everything.
Lean, did we get any letters out to the people in the town offices here that we talked about last week?
It's on my list, to continue.
All right. All right, I think that's all I have too, and I just wanted to bring that all ahead of time, because, uh, we're gonna go into non-public and. Probably not gonna do any business afterwards, so I just wanted to let you know that we all.
I make a motion that we go into non-public for RSA nine one dash alpha?